Now call the study meeting to order, please. And if we could all rise and Councilmember Jolly will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jolly. Good evening and welcome to the February 10th, 2020, study session of Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,891st regular meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, February 24th, 2020. We have all members of council here this evening. I do not have any announcements to make. I don't know if anyone else on council has any announcements they'd like to make. All right, seeing none, we'll continue. And I should also ask, at this time, any member of the audience that would like to address the council on any item not in this evening's agenda, now is an opportunity to do so. Seeing none, we'll continue. Tonight's meeting is a study meeting. There will be no votes taken. The council members will, however, offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. Resolutions offered may including an approving, denying, or a resolution referring referring to a committee or city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting of Monday, 24th, 2020, where they will officially be voted upon. If you would like to participate in any of the agenda items that we take up this evening, please approach one of the podiums on either side of the room when the item is called and you will be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is a city or private entity, will make the initial presentation, followed by remarks from those in the audience who wish to speak. So please come to the podium when the item is called. When you reach the podium, please state your name and, if you wish to, your address for the record. Your name is required, your address is not. So that remarks may be properly attributed to you in the minutes for this meeting. It will also let the council and the TV audience know whom is speaking to them. And with that, we will move ahead with our agenda. Item number one, new business, is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from Dave Picarelli for our graduation party with music on Friday, June 19th, 2020, to end at midnight.
Good evening, David Picarelli.
I'm sorry, I mispronounced your name. Picarelli.
I'm Lee Requster. I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Madam Chair.
Vice President Barr.
Go ahead.
Sir, really just one question. Have you talked to your neighbors, both next to you and behind you?
They are all going to be invited and I'm sure they'll celebrate with us.
Okay.
I have no complaints or any concerns from any of them at this time.
With that, I'd offer an approving for consent if there's no objection.
All right, seeing no objections, we'll place on consent agenda, which means, Mr. Picarelli, that you do not need to return to the meeting on the 24th.
Great, thank you.
Thank you and enjoy the party.
Thank you.
All right, item number two, is a request to waive the sidewalk requirement. This comes to us from Raymond Hurley for the newly constructed home located at 29550 Wentworth Street. Is the petitioner here this evening?
Madam President.
Yes, Vice President Barr.
Even without the petitioner here, this is a place that it absolutely makes sense to waive the sidewalk requirement. I'll offer this for consent as well if there's no objection.
For approval on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
In all due respect, since he isn't here, can we have that on the regular, please?
Yes, we may. Okay, that will go on the regular agenda for the February 24th meeting. Item number three is a request to extend waiver use approval to a new owner. This comes to us from Renus Nuisage, from Gatz Nuisage P L L C for Jennifer Seen, Lee of T's Wellness. This is petition 2009-11-02-0-16 submitted by Tome Chinese Acupressure to operate a massage establishment on property located on the north side of Seven Mile Road between Farmington Road and Norwich Road, 33600 Seven Mile Road in the southeast quarter of Section 4. This is council resolutions 243-17 and 53-10. Good evening.
Hi, how are you? This is Jennifer Lee.
Louder.
Hi, this is Jennifer Lee.
Okay. Hello, Ms. Lee.
Hi.
All right, and you'd like to operate a massage establishment?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Would you like to tell us just maybe a little bit quickly about your business?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
When you, after you... They don't understand.
Vincent Lee, Farmington Hills also.
Okay.
She currently owns a massage, it's a massage therapy establishment in Farmington Hills. She's operated for three years without any problems from the police, from neighbors, or anyone else. She has cameras that watches all her activities and she's a law-abiding citizen and she just wants to open another establishment previously opened before that was closed and was closed for, we're not sure what the reason was, but because the people, the police, closed the place because of, I think, nefarious activities and she doesn't, you know, she doesn't have any history with that establishment. But because she knows, she knows that this establishment is available to buy, she's willing to set up that location, at that location in Livonia.
And there's currently, this is a transfer of waiver, of a current waiver use, correct? So the, just to, I'd like to ask a question. So the, Ms. Lee, you formerly worked at a massage therapy center in Livonia. When you worked there, it was closed by the police.
No, I'm not working there.
No, no, when you were, this is what I'm confused about. When you were working there previously, was it closed by the police?
She never worked there before.
Okay, so she had no, okay, thank you. You had no affiliation when it was closed by the police. All right, and one other question. It is the state that requires, the city has no role in licensing massage therapists, but I know that their state law makes some exceptions. If you only offer acupressure and reflexology, are you and any therapist that will be employed there, will you have, will you have full massage license certification from the state?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
We do.
Okay.
To the chair.
Yes, Madam Toy.
Thank you. If I may to the petitioner, sir, is this your sister or your...
It's my ex-wife.
Your ex-wife. All righty, well, we won't go there. Okay. Anyhow, all righty, nice of you to come in tonight. Okay. So this is by Irish Rose Florist, is that correct? Is this where it's at, near China Inn there? Is that the location?
It's next to a Chinese.
Chinese restaurant.
Chinese restaurant, yes, okay, yeah. Okay, so tell me a little bit of your background because my computer is updating itself and I can't bring things up. So could you, could you tell me, have you worked before in this venue of things? Have you, have you done, no, you've never worked in this?
We never worked at that location.
Not at the location, but you've got a background in massage, right?
She has her own business, three years in Farmington Hills at T Wellness. And she worked before that for two years doing massage therapy.
Okay.
Before she opened the business.
Okay, have you ever run a business like this? Have you ever run it? Have you ever owned one?
She has owned T Wellness for three years now.
Okay, all righty, with no problems whatsoever.
No, no, Farmington Hills police are very strict and we have cameras and we vet all our employees. We make sure they have licenses and so on and so forth. And we don't do the stuff, that stuff.
You know, you know the reluctance, you know, I paused for a minute on this one because the location you're going into had a major, major problems in there. And I'm sure that you're familiar with human trafficking.
Yes.
Okay, so you know that businesses such as massage places are well-known for that kind of thing going on. So we want to be particularly careful, okay? And we want good people like yourselves to come into the community and, you know, have good practices. Okay, all righty, just so we understand that.
Yeah, I myself was born here in the United States. I'm a licensed architect, I'm a licensed builder.
Okay.
I was a safety manager for a landscaping company and...
Perfect.
Then I married her, you know, which is fine.
Then you divorced, yeah, okay.
Let's move on to the chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, yes, anyone else?
To the chair.
Yes, Councilmember Donavich.
Chair for the petitioner, just to clarify, you guys own a location in Farmington Hills. You're coming to Livonia to open a second location. This second location was a previous massage therapeutic building, right, company? Great, are you guys going to, this might be a question mark as well, are they implementing any updates to the building? Any, anything different or no?
I'm not aware of any changes to the business itself.
All right, anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilmember McCullough.
I'd be happy to offer approving resolution for consent.
Regular, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Madam President.
Yes.
I just have one quick question. Thank you, madam. So you operate a current location in Farmington Hills. Will you still operate that other location in addition to this location? Or will you be moving your operations primarily to Livonia only?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll still maintain the location in Farmington Hills.
Okay, so where do you anticipate being on site, in Livonia or Farmington Hills?
Both locations.
Okay.
At different times, you know.
Okay, so what I want to know is, are you going to be on-site operating slash managing the business in Livonia? Or will you be putting that on to somebody else?
She, she has people at the Farmington Hills location already and she will primarily make sure that everything is going fine in Livonia. And then she will have someone operating that as a, you know, when she's not there. So she will have, she will move from one place to another.
Because the two places are very close.
Okay, thank you.
If I have a new place right in Livonia, I will focus Livonia first because of Farmington now is okay. But, you know, I just want to focus the new place if I got it.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
One of the problems with massage therapy places is that you sit and you wait and you wait for customers to show up. It's like, it's total boredom. So you have to have someone there and you can't, it's like, so you just go back and forth.
I probably do not need to reiterate this. The industry that you find yourself in has had some bad actors. So we, as good stewards of our community, have to look at these types of situations with a very close eye. We're not intending to ask you difficult questions. We're just trying to look out for the community's best interest. And given the site history, different operators, right, not yourself, but with the site history, there were things to be read that were particularly not something we're interested in happening previously at that location. So I appreciate the information. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, so we have that going on, the approving resolution for the regular meeting of February 24th, 2020. Because it's on the regular meeting, we would ask you to come back that evening, please, all right? And that meeting will be at seven o'clock in the same location. All right, thank you very...
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number four is the appointment of Patrick Meese, Ph.D., to the Plymouth Road Development Authority. This comes to us from the office of the mayor for a four-year term, which will expire on May 16th, 2024. Good evening, Mr. Varga.
Good evening, Council President, members of the council. We are pleased to be able to offer the appointment for four years to the PRDA of Dr. Patrick Meese. He is a Livonia resident, a member of, principal of the Western Wayne Skill Center, former special ed teacher, has a doctorate in educational leadership and numerous other degrees. And he is here tonight, should you have any questions for him.
All right.
Hello, everyone.
Thank you, good evening, Dr. Meese. Yes, Councilmember Toy.
Mr. Meese, or Dr. Meese, are you part of the Meese family?
I am.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
Clearly.
Like, well, obviously, the last name, I get it, but Beebe, Bee, your father was a judge.
Grandfather was a judge, yes.
That's your grandfather? God, you're dating me now. Thanks a lot. I'm going to ask for an approving even though he dated my age.
To the chair.
He comes from, he comes from a great family.
Yes, Councilmember Donavich.
I just want to say, doctor, looking forward to this and looking forward to hopefully working with you. I live along Plymouth Road off of Plymouth and Angster Road area. So I'm looking forward to some of the ideas and what your guys' board can work on on the eastern side of Livonia.
Wonderful.
Anyone else? Sorry, that offered for the consent agenda.
However you want to do it, madam.
All right, Dr. Meese, thank you for coming here tonight. Again, it was a pleasure connecting with you and working with you on the inauguration.
Likewise.
And as you know, we were delighted to have a number of your outstanding Wayne Skill Center, Western Wayne Skill Center students here. And aside from your PRDA, look forward to continuing to look for other opportunities to engage your citizens in activities at City Hall. And it looks like this, the PRDA will provide you with a new set of experiences and so, congratulations, so.
Thank you so much.
And because it's on consent, as you know, you don't have to come back.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you and thanks for being here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we will move now on to item number five. This is the appointment of Catherine Shiskowski to the Board of Review. This also comes to us from the office of the mayor. This should be for a three-year term, which will expire on February 16th, 2023.
Good evening again, council. We are also proud to have the opportunity to appoint Catherine Shiskowski to a three-year term on the Board of Review. She is a product of Livonia Public Schools, graduate of Franklin High School, lived here most of her life, has earned a BA in English from Wayne State University, working as a legal secretary and a doctorate, JD, I'm sorry, from University of Detroit, where she was executive editor of the Law Review. And practiced nearly 30 years in law and then became an RN. So she is active in numerous volunteer organizations and she is here to answer any questions, should you have any.
She went to Franklin and not Bentley.
All right.
Franklin.
Council, yes, Mr. McCullough. Councilmember McCullough.
Well, for Kate being a patriot, that's enough to offer an approving resolution. I've had the pleasure to know Kate for the last couple of years and her integrity and her education background and what she's done for the community on top of her professional career is more than something that we'd want to be on one of our committees. So I'd offer an approving resolution for consent.
Madam President, I'd like to keep that on the regular, please.
Okay, all right, anyone else on council?
Madam President.
Yes, Vice President Barr.
First of all, Ms. Shiskowski, I really enjoyed reading through your bio on here. Got to, I was not aware of so much of your background and it is impressive.
Thank you.
I enjoyed reading through it. I do have a couple of questions for you. What's your, what's your particular interest in the Board of Review? Why the Board of Review?
Well, practicing law and then, you know, doing some work for the Selective Service. I mean, it's, critical thinking matters. You know, you have a set of facts, you have a set of guidelines and, you know, you look at a situation, you try to look at that and do that. I think I have the mindset where I can do that, that kind of thing. It's something too that, I mean, I've never filed for any type of tax relief or anything like that. So it'd be kind of new, but it's a challenge. And it would be something, as I understand it, this would be mostly with residential properties in the city. It'd be something I think I would enjoy. And again, with my, my background.
Bless you.
This is not something that's an unfamiliar type of, type of process for me. And, you know, I fully understand the rights of homeowners, but also the needs of the city and, you know, looking at things and determining whether or not someone's tax assessment is fair.
Okay, the other question I have, and this, this maybe will sound sensitive. I don't mean it to, but there's probably no way to ask it without it sounding sensitive. Obviously, you're very actively involved as a president of Livonia Democratic Club.
Correct.
And you guys were very, very active in this past year.
Correct.
And I'm wondering if you see that as an issue, just, obviously, everybody has political affiliations. But be so active in a partisan position and yet serving on a, on a, on a nonpartisan board, if you see any issue with that?
No, because, because, you know, I practiced law for almost 30 years. When you have that client, when you have that obligation, that is your client. That is what you do and you put aside other things. I mean, plenty of clients with other types of political considerations, but you deal on what their issues are, what their concerns are, and you represent them to the best of your ability. And that is this kind of a, kind of a function to me.
Thanks.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember Jolly.
You know, I've, I've known Ms. Shiskowski here for probably approximately four or five years. I have found her to be a straightforward, capable person. I have no doubt that she impartially performed the duties of the Board of Review. And I hesitate to say this and I hate to say this. The city government is nonpartisan and we have not had this litmus test for other people appointed to city commissions and boards where it's been brought up.
Excuse me, Mr. Jolly, I'm just going to ask you to clarify what you mean by litmus test.
I'm questioning about political activity outside of the scope of the appointment at hand. So I'll just put that on the record.
Thank you.
I will say that my purpose in accepting this would be to serve the people of Livonia and that's my primary goal. My primary goal with, with everything that I do, political or otherwise, is to make Livonia better, is to raise everybody up, you know? And that's what my, that's what my aim is here.
Thank you.
To the chair.
Just, go ahead. Yes, Councilmember McCullough.
So, thank you, Madam President. Just to kind of reiterate, we've got a bio based on Kate. And outside of any other issues that we bring up, the appointment to the Board of Review, matching the bio of her education and experience, clearly, in my opinion, and I know I'm one of seven, demonstrates someone that would be an asset to the Board of Review. And I just want to go on record to state that my decision would be based purely on the bio that's at hand. And again, I thank you for stepping up and wanting to do something more for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCullough. Councilmember Donavich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To the chair, I think that Councilman Barr's question was warranted. As a member of this board, I spent the better part of an entire year being slandered by your organization, led by you. You are the president of an organization and that's nothing against you or anything about anybody else, but I think it is a good question. When you voluntarily put yourself in that position, you are now also asking to be put in another position and you have to impartially serve in that position. So I think it was a good question and I struggle with this, with this vote myself because of my past experiences and other people on this board and their past experiences.
Well, we can, we can discuss, discuss your views on that away, away from tonight.
Please, please address your comments to me.
Okay, yes. Again, I am here to serve the people of Livonia. This is, this is, this is a nonpartisan job. There is no political affiliation. You know, last year I organized an opioid farm at Stevenson High School where we had more than 100 people there and I believe that several people here were also there. It was not partisan in the least, not in the least. It was there to help the people of Livonia, help the surrounding communities with a very dangerous problem. And, I mean, I think all of us have times when we, we might be a little more partisan than others, but in serving the city of Livonia in this capacity, this is a nonpartisan thing and I'm here to serve.
Thank you. I'd like to, if no one else has any comments, Vice President Barr.
I want to be careful, again, I know this is sensitive. I, there is no political litmus test here. The difference, I just, my concern and I'm struggling with it because, first of all, I will echo what Councilman McCullough said about your qualifications as they're put on here. I don't, I don't frankly question those from a qualification standpoint at all. So I, so I agree with that. The difference here to me is not political affiliation, it's being in an active partisan role. Frankly, the president of a very partisan organization, that's the difference. It's not a matter of your integrity at all. It's not a matter of your qualifications. It's not a matter of political affiliation. It's a matter of position is what I struggle with. So I just wanted to clarify that. I know it's a sensitive topic, but I wanted to be abundantly clear about that. Thanks.
Thank you. The reason I asked Mr. Jolly, just to start there for clarification and just reiterating it was a question. I've always taken the nonpartisan charge of my job in city council extremely seriously. I appointed someone who was not a member of my, the only appointment I've ever had. I appointed someone who was not a member of my political party, who was a very active member of your party, to a seat on the zoning board. When Mr. Jolly came in fifth four years ago, I took a leadership role in advocating for his appointment, certainly knowing that he was not a member of my political party. And then when he ran again two years ago, I took a very, very active role in supporting and advocating for his campaign. So I understand very much the nonpartisan and take it very, very seriously. You are very clearly and extremely well-educated and highly qualified member for the Board of Review. You know, your, your work on the opioids is to be commended, certainly, as you pointed out, Kate, that is nonpartisan. And I also take very seriously and respect the mayor's prerogative to appoint citizens of her choosing to commissions in the city. And I'm very comfortable supporting qualified applicants, even if we have differences in political philosophies. I realize I wasn't a member of council at the time, but a number of years ago, a previous member appointed, wished to appoint our current mayor to, I believe, the Planning Commission. And she was very clearly qualified for that role. But a majority of council members, who I think didn't agree with her political affiliation, denied her that appointment. My concern is not, Kate, that we have different political views, but it goes to what my colleague, it goes to what my colleague's Vice President Barr and Councilmember Donavich mentioned. It's not our difference in political views, but you do serve as the president of a 100% partisan organization. And in the last campaign, not only did you guys advocate solely for members of your own party, you put forward a lot of claims that suggested you take a very dim view of people who are not part of your party. And as you know, as well as anyone, because of your background, your understanding, your desire to serve, on the Board of Review, it's absolutely imperative that all political and partisan issues be put aside.
Of course.
But, you know, and again, it comes back to your leadership role in making it very clear that you and your organization not only think highly of your own candidates, but you take a dim view and made some very serious accusations, if you will, about members who don't share your political beliefs. So, you know, I do, with that said, I do respect the mayor's prerogative to appoint very qualified and capable members to commissions. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember McCullough.
I just would like to finish on this is, you know, I've been on council now for a little over a month. I'm, I'm kind of blown away by what we're talking about here, just being honest. We should be, in my opinion, basing anybody that's going up for any kind of Board of Review based on their bio and not whether they have a partisan affiliation. That's what, what Ms. Kate does on her time, that's her time. And of course, the political scenes can be very tempered. I've learned that firsthand. But again, this council or the leaders of Livonia, we need to be making decisions based on a bio, history, education, experience, and whether, whether or not that person can fulfill the duties. And that's how I'll be casting my vote. And I, you know, I know it's going to go on the regular and I just would like to just put it on the record that we all should make that decision and our vote count based on that.
Anything else, Mr. McCullough?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilmember White.
I've known Ms. Shiskowski for a number of years. I also, before I became a council member, served on the Board of Review. So I'm very familiar with the... so I'm very familiar with the task that she will be undertaking. And I know, because I'm a lawyer myself, the advantage it is to have a legal background and serve on the Board of Review. And I think she would admirably serve in that capacity, and I believe that she could set aside any political leanings to serve the city of Livonia and the citizens of the city of Livonia appropriately, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember White. And, Mr. McCullough, I appreciate your comments. You know, in listening to this, I'm at least speaking for me, not for my colleagues, I'm raising some questions about, not about political philosophy, but about actions and statements. So, you know, suggesting that mine are motivated, and again, I just would like to reiterate that my record of being nonpartisan on council speaks for itself.
Not questioning it, all I'm asking for is just that we base the decision on the task at hand, is all I ask.
Understood, thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm not sure I want to get involved in this conversation. But in all seriousness, it was not a pleasant campaign, let's face it. But you don't enter campaigns to be always pleasant. God knows I've run in enough of them, and, you know, they can get pretty brutal. The thing I was most shocked with, quite frankly, from that side of the aisle, was the partisanism shown in that election. And I've always tried to be a very fair person across the board. While I operate in the Republican Party, I don't wear it on my sleeve, and I try and be fair as I approach things. So I would only hope, as we move forward in our community, and as this mayor and her appointees or her department heads move forward, that we can look as people, as people, and not political affiliations, not brown or blue eyes, and base it on those kinds of things, rather than what party we all come from and our belief system. I think we've seen that in our country right now, whether you believe with the president or not the president, or your state rep, or anybody else. I think we are Americans, and we've got to become united in what we do for our country, because it's so important. And I don't mean to sound so corny here, but in all honesty, you know, being a student of political science, I think it's very, very important, and I think there's still some deep wounds that I think you're hearing tonight, Kate, from some of my colleagues. And I empathize with some of that, because obviously, I was in that election last year, too. And it can be very hurtful for folks in this business, including both sides of the aisle. I've operated, you know, in a whole different kind of venue up in Lansing, where, you know, partisanism is very strong and alive. But I got to tell you, I was very shocked we got so partisan in the last election, I really am. And I'm hoping that as we move forward, that doesn't happen ever, ever again. I really do. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. What I would say, too, is as a nurse, taking care of lots of different kinds of people, politics is completely aside, you concentrate on what the issue is at hand and making things better for that person.
Absolutely.
And that's where I'm coming from. That's how I operate.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you, Ms. Shisikowski. We'll look forward to seeing you in two weeks. And thank you for being here, and thank you for answering everyone's questions in such a professional and candid manner. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on, item number five, no, I'm sorry, item number six, we won't go through five again, is a request for informal approval of the proposed program and tentative budget for the 2020-21 Community Development Block Grant Program. This comes to us from the Livonia Housing Commission, so that a second public hearing can be held on this matter, after which time a final program and budget be forwarded to the council for formal adoption. Good evening, Ms. Isaacson and Jolly.
Good evening, and I'd also like to introduce Armand Sims. She is the Director of the Community Development Block Grant Program, and she will be attending some of the city council meetings in the future, so I thought that this would be a good opportunity for her to experience how we go through the approval process.
Excellent, and it's Ms. Sims? Yes. Welcome, and thank you for being here tonight.
So we are here to ask for approval for a preliminary budget for our 2020-21 Community Development Block Grant. Most of, I'm assuming, all of you guys received the proposed budget with the expenditures. So pretty much everything has stayed the same as the present year, with the exception of the acquisition of tax-reverted properties. We plan to purchase a lot this upcoming year to be used with the Livonia Public Schools School Trades Program, to possibly do a new build. So in the past, we've always purchased properties that were in poor condition. We have either demoed, sold the lots, or allowed the school to rehab it. Tim Martin from the Livonia Public Schools is interested in doing a new build. So that is what we're proposing. That's where we're putting our funding in. So everything else is pretty much the same.
Madam Chair. Thank you, yes, and just to clarify, you're asking for informal approval.
Informal approval, so right now, Congress has approved a budget, but we don't know what our final figure is. We won't get that until April. But because we have to go through the public hearing process and thirty-day comment periods, we have to start the process a few months in advance.
Thank you.
So we'll be coming back to you in April for formal approval.
Thank you so much, Ms. Isaacson. Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Isaacson, thank you for all you do over there. You've got a big job, I'm telling you. Those can be some crazy places. For lack of a better way to put it, Ms. Sims, you're a brave soul. Are you a Democrat or a Republican? No, I'm teasing, I'm only teasing. Only kidding, only kidding. Anyhow, I want to offer the informal approving, if I may, and much congratulations to you, ma'am.
Thank you.
To the Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Donavick.
Question for me, the house that you mentioned with Livonia Public Schools, those houses, those properties, those, that's the Career Center, that's the construction program there, right? Yeah, a friend of mine is very involved with that, and you guys do amazing work. I've seen some of those homes. I think our Congresswoman, who's a Democrat, which is totally okay, was visited one of the homes this year in Livonia, and was, it was all over social media, and it got a ton of traction. And it's awesome to see people, young people, millennials or whatnot, getting involved in the trades and seeing how much money you can make in the skilled trades. It's a dying breed, and it's very important that I think the city of Livonia and our LPS take a strong role in showing young people that you can have an amazing career, take care of your family, provide for your family, and I think this program really helps ensure that. So thank you guys for what you both are doing and what your organization board is doing. Thank you.
For them, yeah.
Yes, Council-
Thank you. If I may, real quick, I got a phone call from somebody the other day. They're looking for somebody that needs a permanent ramp for disability. So if you would put out the word, please, you know, call me, call the council office, but it's permanent disability, it's not just a broken arm or something.
That is our, the Minor Home Repair Program.
Yep.
That offers grants up to $5,000, and as long as they're low income, they would qualify for that grant.
Okay, but we're looking for somebody to build the ramp for them. It's the Rotary Club and that, too.
Actually, Linda McCann sent me an email last week. They, she's a-
Did they find someone?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So contact Linda McCann.
Yeah, yeah, she contacted me and another person did, too.
I thought you were good with a hammer.
I am good with a hammer. I used to build them, so great, thank you. All right, one of my many trades, Madam Chair.
Just to go.
All right. So we are putting this on consent, so you do not have to come back to see us in two weeks. And just like to thank, welcome you again, Ms. Sims, we look forward to seeing you. And Ms. Isaacson, to commend you on the excellent job you do. But also, and I've told you this when we've spoken, I know how busy you are and how your phone never stops ringing and how there are endless emails, and somehow, you always find time to circle back with people.
I try.
So it's greatly appreciated. Thank you to both of you. We look forward to seeing you soon. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, we will move on to item number seven. This is a request for increase in rate changes in green fees for 2020. This comes to us from the Department of Recreation for all city golf courses effective for the 2020 golf season, which we hope will begin before June.
Thank you, Council President. I sincerely hope so. And then outdoor pool season would begin, and that would solve one more problem of Parks and Recreation.
Mr. Davis, that was a commentary only on the weather and last year's flooding, and that was it.
Yeah, well, we did have some-
The golf leagues were held in the bands, so.
Wet golf courses last year. Again, it's everyone's favorite time where I'm coming before you and asking for rate increases of some program or another. Golf course, we are being very specific here and looking at rates. We did a competitive market analysis. We saw, again, we were near the bottom in these areas here with weekend resident eighteen holes, seniors nine and eighteen holes at all three of our golf courses, non-resident weekend eighteen holes at Fox and Whispering Willows, and senior non-resident rates at Fox and Whispering Willows. And we tried to be very specific. You can see from the attachments that we provided, our year-end balances. This is an enterprise fund, so the fees have to cover expenses for this. And every year, the expenses are going up. As we know, minimum wage keeps going up, the cost of a loaf of bread keeps going up, and we have to be, we have to raise fees to meet those costs. We're also asking that we adjust our 409, which is our capital improvement account, contributions. You can see, from 2015, we had a balance of $474,000, to in '19, we had an ending balance of $176,000. So we need to increase our contributions to that capital, excuse me, account as well. So twofold here, asking for small rate increases, very specific ones, and we're asking for the contributions to be adjusted, which will increase overall our yearly contributions into our capital improvement account. I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, council.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember McCullough.
Just a quick question, so you're, the 409 account?
Yes.
You guys came up with a number, why not, I guess it's just, why not go for two and $2.50 based on nine or eighteen? Would that help you more?
I think we were looking at, one, to simplify the contributions. Before, it was, they ranged all over the place from a dollar to $2.50. We wanted to make it, to simplify it down. And then simply, we do need some additional operating funds as well, so we didn't want to put the whole thing into capital. Again, you can see the total amount we're raising per year is $34,000. I mean, it's not a great deal of money. It would be very simple and easier for us to simply raise fees across the board, every single category, a dollar or $2, and raise more revenue. Again, we look at these, you know, through the eyes of our residents and doing what we think the market will bear.
I think that the fixed rate definitely helps you. I just, you know, you put the explanation, and I would be happy to offer an approving resolution for consent.
Right, any other?
Regular, Madam Chair, if I may? Yes, I do.
All right, we will place it on the regular, which means the good news for you, Mr. Davis, is you get to come back and see us in two weeks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, it is good news for all of us.
All right, and thank you, and thank you for the detailed analysis, it's helpful and appreciated. Item number eight is request to approve final budget adjustments for the fiscal year ending in November 30, 2019. This comes to us from the Department of Finance. Good evening, Mr. Slater.
Good evening, council. As we do each year, we're coming to, for our final budget adjustments for our fiscal year end, this year being November 30, 2019. And the adjustments we're requesting takes available budget from departments that had access, being utilities, inspection, and information systems, and transferring that to departments that exceeded their budget. Those departments were the mayor's department, elections, employee termination, and workers' compensation. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Slater. Vice President Barr.
Mike, can you tie, the one really large item on here, as far as was the cost overrun, was the employee termination pay, is that just, do we, I want to venture to guess, can you explain what the source of that is?
The employee termination pay is the payout of accrued sick and vacation when people retire. There is no scientific way to estimate that. We don't know necessarily who's retiring within ear. Long-term employees that have built up larger accrual balances, obviously, there's larger payouts for those. If we have more people retire, there's, it's larger. So we set the budget based upon an estimate of averages for prior years, but this year, we had more people retire, so the amount was higher.
So is this year, and I don't, I know we deal with this every year, but I'll specifically remember this number. Was this year, was this totally abnormal, or is this something that fluctuates a lot?
This is the highest year we've ever had, as far as I recall.
Okay, and then I have to, I don't know if this is best for you or Ms. Nash, but I have to ask, because she's here, the Election Commission is another piece of it. Can you or whoever's most appropriate explain what that cost overrun was?
It's contractual costs, which includes election workers, the companies that support the elections. There's a lot of things that go into that contractual line item, but that's the line item that was over budget.
I just wanted to make sure she was paying attention.
Oh, I know it's there.
It all makes sense to me, maybe there's more questions, but I'll offer approval for consent if there's no objection.
All right, seeing no objections, we'll place that on consent. So with that, we'll move on to your, the next item, which is item number nine, which is also yours, Mr. Slater. This is a request to accept quotation for life insurance and accidental death and dismemberment insurance. This comes to us from your department, from the Insurance Care One America, for the period of March 1, 2020, to February 28, 2023. Mr. Slater.
We've solicited quotes for life and AD&amp;D insurance coverage with the help of Marsh McLennan, our insurance agent. Nine quotes were received. The low quote was from One America, and we're requesting that city council approve the quote from One America to provide coverage, as you indicated, for a three-year period from March 1, 2020, to February 28, 2023.
Madam President. Yes. Happy to offer the approving resolution on consent. There are no objections. I do have a question, if I may.
Yes.
Marsh McLennan, is that Marsh McLennan Agency?
Yes.
Okay, is our insurance agent. So they, they really, maybe this isn't the right technical term, they really act as a broker, if you will.
Yes.
Right, helping us solicit?
They contact these companies and entertain.
On our behalf.
Right.
Right, and then use some of their expertise, right, and judgment to look at the different quotes?
A lot of their expertise and judgment, yes.
Just a question, how do we, how often, and how do we select Marsh McLennan? And then do we have a, and I assume we do, do we have some ongoing, you know, contract with them, which also comes up for renewal, Mike?
No, we don't. Their services, they've been with the city twenty-five-plus years, so they've been a long time provider of services to the city. Their costs are paid through the insurance company in these rates. There's no additional costs that we pay them.
Okay, so that doesn't need to go up for bid or anything?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Did we have this offered?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Oh, no, we didn't.
I offered.
Oh, I'm sorry. Long agenda tonight. Thanks, Mike, that's also on consent. All right, item number ten, moving right along, is a request for authorization to purchase four 2024 F-150 responder super crew four-by-four pickup trucks through the state of Michigan and Macomb County. Broad bid process, this comes to, this comes to us from Livonia Fire and Rescue. This is to replace current vehicles and add versatility and safety to the fleet from budgeted funds. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Madam President and fellow council members. I am here tonight requesting an approving resolution to purchase four utility pickup trucks. The trucks will be purchased through the Cooperative Purchasing Consortium, the Michigan State Bid Process, through budgeted funds. These vehicles will be replacing four currently-used vehicles that average, with an average age of just under fifteen years old. These vehicles will enhance versatility to department operations and increase overall safety to support staff while working on emergency scenes.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Donavick.
Through the Chair, Chief. Just for the people watching at home, what exactly do these pickup trucks do? What is their day-to-day operational usage?
So the vehicles that we use that are not your typical ambulance or fire engine type of response vehicle are used by administrative and support staff who also respond to a myriad of different type of emergency responses. So we serve as safety officers, resources for our emergency crews that work on a 24-hour basis. We do that on a nine-to-five, pretty much 24/7 basis, as needed, to support our crews that are working daily.
So these vehicles work very hard to serve the city?
They will, yes.
To the Chair, I'd like to offer an approving resolution on consent if there is no objection.
Any comments? None, then that will be placed on the consent. Any comments? None. Then that will be placed on the consent, consent agenda for, for the, the meeting of the 24th. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Moving along to item number 11. This is a request for authorization to purchase one 2020 Lifeline Type 1 Superliner ambulance utilizing the Houston-Gaveston Area Council, HGAC Cooperative Consortium. This too comes to us from Livonia Fire Rescue. This is to replace the current frontline squad three from budgeted funds. Chief.
Again, thank you, Madam President and fellow council members. I'm requesting an approving resolution to purchase the frontline ambulance that will be purchased through the Houston-Gaveston Cooperative Bid Process. Again, that, that helps the city make sure that we are getting the best pricing available to the community. This ambulance is currently scheduled to be housed at Station 3 and will be used on a daily basis to provide the highest level of emergency care here in the city of Livonia. The old ambulance will be moved to a reserve status while the 2006 Freightliner ambulance, which is about 14 years old currently, will be either traded or sold consistent with the city-approved disposal options. Again, whatever is going to return the most money back to the city, we'll use that option.
Madam Chair.
Yes, council member.
I'd like to ask for an approving.
Like that consent?
Whatever your choice is, Madam Chair.
Any objections?
I have no objection. I do have a question.
Yes, Vice President Barr.
Chief, just, there's one line in here that talks about trade, and it says if desired, can be traded in for $3,500. Just curious, is that typically the route you guys go? Or do you find that you get more money for a private party sale, or?
So the combination of three different avenues have been used in the past. Auction, which we have seen the lowest return value. The last vehicle that we purchased ambulance-wise, we did receive significantly more than the $3,500. It's kind of whatever the market will bear at the given time. The $3,500, that's the line item, has been the offer that's been provided by the, the company that we're purchasing or planning to purchase the vehicle from. So we do want to look at some private party options, and if we can find a better option out there, we'll certainly take advantage of it.
Great. I totally trust your judgment and glad to know you're looking at those options, so, thanks.
Out of curiosity.
Council member Donovan.
Out of curiosity, chief, when the vehicles that we auction off or sell or whatnot, they're usually marked with Livonia Police Fire, et cetera, et cetera. Are those markings taken off the vehicles before they leave our possession, or how does that normally work?
We do remove those, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and that's on consent?
I don't know. Thank you.
So you do not need to come back and see us in two weeks unless, of course, you'd like to. Many people do. Anyway, thanks, chief. Oh, wait, we have, oh, we have one more on here. You get to stay, lucky guy. Request, item number 12 is a request for authorization to purchase one power-load cot fasting system from a sole-source provider. This too comes to us from Livonia Fire and Rescue. This is to add to the department's existing fleet of compatible Stryker ambulance cots from budgeted funds.
Madam President? Did I get it?
Pardon?
Oh, go ahead.
Well, we're just gonna, did you have a question before the chief explains what this is?
No.
Okay.
All right. Well, finally, Madam President, fellow council members, I'm requesting approving resolution to purchase a power-load cot fastening system from Stryker Medical, which is a sole-source vendor for this product through budgeted funds. The power-load system will be installed in the new ambulance and will standardize all of our frontline ambulances with this device. The power-load system is the device that is mounted in the floor of the ambulance, which the patient stretcher then attaches to. It is designed to assist firefighters load and unload the stretcher from the vehicle, thus reducing preventable injuries while increasing patient's safety and security during transport.
Thank you. Yes, council member McCullough.
Sorry, I think the red bull was, I was a super pumped because out of, out of all the items we have tonight, I actually watched the video on this mechanism, and it was pretty wild. It's nice to know, we also have these in the other vehicles as well. I think I read that we have four other Stryker units.
With the purchase of this unit, we'll have it in six of our frontline units and two of our reserve units.
I know it sounds cheesy, but you got to watch the video. It was pretty cool, so. Very cool to have this innovation and technology. And I will be offering an approving resolution of Madam Chair's decision.
All right, no objections to being on consent. It's on consent, so you don't need to come back and see us. And again, just council member White mentioned at the beginning of the regular meeting. Congratulations and thanks, thanks to the deputy chief and the trainers and all the other folks that you had involved. I think you had three days, two sessions a day, of the outstanding CPR, AED, and Stop the Bleed training for city employees. Outstanding. And the other thing that was great was people had a chance to see the Lucas devices, which is, those of us who were on council last year, I think we approved one, and then we approved additional, right? So do we?
Those are on all of our frontline ambulances now as well.
And, and what I was, and if you haven't had a chance to see the Lucas device, I suggest that we could maybe get, you know, whoever's interested to come over to the FD to see a demonstration. But what I didn't realize is those have now replaced our paramedics actually doing the, I mean, you know, if they're first line, right, but once the Lucas is in place, that takes over all the CPR.
They definitely assist our first responders in providing the best patient care that somebody here in the city can get.
And I think the example that was mentioned in the past, if you're going up and downstairs, right, sometimes compressions would have to be stopped in order to safely maneuver someone on a, on a stretcher, and now the compressions just continue, so. Thank you for everything you guys do and always being at the leading edge, so thank you.
It was our pleasure to have you there, and we're going to hold some more in the future. We've had a lot of good feedback, so I truly appreciate your participation.
Good, and thanks to Ms. Mayor, too, who I know worked with you to make that happen, in the support of the mayor, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, see you soon, chief. Okay, item number 13. This is an award of contract. This comes to us from the Public Service Division for repairs to the fresh intake room at Bennett Library from budgeted funds. Good evening, Mr. Moore, and we're always in favor of fresh intake rooms.
Oh, that's good, counsel. Counsel, this project was advertised in The Observer and on the Mitten website. The bid opening occurred in November 12th, 2019. Three companies supplied work proposals to OHM, which were reviewed by public service staff. The proposed work will address mechanical and structural issues, new waterproofing, new concrete sidewalks, landscape, and irrigation that will be designed to lessen impacts of water infiltration. The project's scope was forced to change substantially because of more extreme deterioration than originally known when the estimate budget was done for the work. The extra issues were discussed in the scope of work that was released by OHM advisors as a result of their consultant services on the project. The department is asking counsel for two items. Approve a contract amendment with OHM advisors for a not-to-exceed amount of $24,000 for consultant services on the project, and to award a not-to-exceed contract with North American Construction out of St. Clair Shores in a not-to-exceed amount in 300, for $367,500 to perform all the work necessary on the project.
Thank you. Council member Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. So obviously, this is not the money that we would like to be spending on the library, right?
Correct.
Is this going to largely, if not totally, correct the situation in the basement?
Yes, it should.
That I think is referred to as the dungeon in many ways? I mean, unfortunately, I think it really is a health and safety issue, and we, we have done remediation efforts in regards to trying to stem the flow of the water damage in the past, have we not?
Yes.
Will this be the one-and-done that fixes it for good? Are you confident of that? Or, I mean, what is your level of confidence? Because we are talking about so much money here, and because, as I understand the issue, I mean, we really couldn't be looking at a more dangerous situation in the basement, really. To the point where we have to make sure personnel don't go in certain parts of the basement. So you're, you're confident?
I am confident that we've got a long-term solution. I mean, the building is 30, 40 years old, and I'm hoping that this is a 30-year fix, 40-year fix.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
I'll offer an approving.
Okay. On consent?
On consent if there is no objection.
Okay, just, you know, to make a comment, right, when, when we, we talk about some of the master plan work and the idea of new civic center, right, and, and sometimes you'll mention a new library. And people who aren't familiar, and I mean, that was certainly me before I started doing this kind of work, right, they think, oh my gosh, we do, and it's a beautiful library, and it's an amazing library, right? But it's not always apparent to people on the outside. This is, and again, if I, if I understand the question that was asked and your answer, this is $400,000, not of enhancements, not of regular preventive maintenance, not of upgrade. This is, this is a fix.
Correct.
You know, to a, to a building that's been there for, and I'm, and again, it serves us well. You know, we have our library director here tonight, he does a, and staff does a wonderful job, right? The city does a wonderful job maintaining it, but $400,000 for a fix. So anyway, I just wanted to, you know, clarify that and share that with people who are here tonight and watching at home. So thank you, Mr. Moore.
Welcome.
And we will put that on consent.
Thank you.
Continuing along with the, with the Mr. Moore part of the agenda. Item number 14, this is an award of contract, also comes to some, to, comes to us from the Public Service Division for the 2020 street tree planting program from budgeted funds.
Counsel, this program was advertised in The Observer and on the Mitten website. We had a mandatory pre-bid meeting on December 19th of 2019. Five contractors were there. We opened bids on the, on January 14th and received four bids. We are planting approximately 440 trees made up of 30 different species from the city's approved species list. Greg Davis Landscape Services out of Gross Point was the low bidder. Following internal discussion amongst public service staff, the department is recommending that city council approve Cremboley Nursery, the second low bidder, at 5145 Ford Road in Canton in the amount of $113,960. The department is making this request for a multitude of reasons related to the performance, quality of trees, increased costs in previous contracts, and failing relationship between the contractor and public service staff.
Counsel, approving. Would you like to, was that a request to offer an approving resolution?
Yes, yeah, that is approving.
Council member Toy.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Would you like that on consent?
Whatever your pleasure is, Madam Chair.
Can I, just a question?
Of course. Council member Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Moore, although I appreciate the brief answer there, and I'm not going to push you about it here, I can't recall, and my computer's not loading the packet. Is this detailed in our packet?
It was an $8,000 difference.
No, just the, no, the, why the second bidder was going, I'm sorry. When we have computer difficulties.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, councilman McCullough.
I, I just want to basically commend you guys for, I know what it's like to have to not, so, you know, low bid is not always low bid. So for you to go on record and, and have a reason why from poor workmanship shows a lot that you guys are going through the right steps and being fiscally responsible and looking out for the best interest of the city, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's on consent, so continuing on, item number 15. This too comes to us from the Public Service Division. This is for the 2020 and 2021 tree and stump removal program from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore, keep going, you're doing a great job.
Thanks. The program was advertised in The Observer and on the Mitten website. Pre-bid meeting was also held on the 19th of December. We had eight contractors. The bids were opened on the 14th of January, and we received two bids. JMAC Tree and Debris was the low bidder. Their references were checked, and all appeared to be in order. All references spoke highly of their equipment, performance, professionalism, and ability to quickly complete jobs. We're inspecting their site this weekend, or this Friday, but they're a current contractor for the city of Detroit, so we feel that they have the needed equipment. This is a two-year program with 560 trees on each year of the removal list, and we're asking council to approve the two-year total in the amount of $552,436.70 from budgeted funds.
Counsel.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm happy to offer the approving resolution on consent if there's no objection.
Yes, councilman McCullough.
Madam Chair, I just have one question. So looking at the bids, JMAC came in at, you know, a little over a half million dollars. Davy came in at two, you know, a little over 2 million, so there's, there's definitely a gap between there. Do you know in years past what we've usually spent on the tree and stump services?
The 2018-19 program was approximately $359,000.
Okay.
So there was an increase to this program.
No, that's, I, I was worried that you were going to come back and say it was 1.5, and JMAC was, so, no, no further questions.
All right, so that will be on consent.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing on, item number 16. Award of contract from the Public Service Division for the 2020 through 2023 municipal park mowing program, which involves approximately 136 acres of park cemetery and fire station property from funds budgeted for this purpose. Mr. Moore.
We advertised it. We had a pre-bid meeting. The bid opening was on January 28th. We received four bids. The low bid contractor was Urban Landscapes in the amount of $125,875.64 for the four-year total. This represents an approximately $1,800 increase over the last cycle. The current contractor, the office manager, and the production manager are going to work for this new company, so we are fairly confident with the new contractor that we will not see a change in service.
To the chair.
These are un, are non-recreational parks.
Madam Chair.
I think, oh, council member Donovan.
Ladies first, please.
No, no, please, youth.
You feel like an old man.
Okay, let's keep this going. Council member Donovan.
Mr. Moore, this program is not to be confused with the program when individuals, residential and commercial, don't cut their lawn, okay? I would like to offer an approving resolution on consent if there is no objection.
I'll support that.
All right, no objections to consent. Okay, we will put that on the consent agenda, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Item number 17, award a bid from the Public Service Division for Phase 2 of the replacement installation of a new irrigation system at designated areas within the Civic Center complex. And this is what we always like to hear from budgeted funds.
Yes. This project was advertised in The Observer and on Mitten. We had a pre-bid meeting on the 16th of January. The bid opening was on the 29th. We received three bids. Tech 7 Company out of Shelby Township was the low bidder of the three companies. Tech Center is also the current contractor that takes care of the Plymouth Road Development irrigation system. The work will entail replacement of the system at LPD, replacement of the north lawn of City Hall, and the possibility of irrigation around the artwork at the south lawn. The listed items are coming from budgeted funds, and all these systems are original to the building's construction. We're asking council to approve the contract with Tech 7 in the amount of $82,525.
Madam Chair.
Yes, council member Toy.
Okay, I'm going to ask for an approving and a raise for Mr. Moore because he has really outdone himself tonight, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I do have one question, Madam President. No, no, were you wanting that on consent?
Sure, if you want it on consent.
Not trying to do your job, Kathleen, but just going to say, I have no objection, but I have a question.
You could probably do it much better.
I actually doubt that. There was a line in here, Doug, that it said, "The new system is state-of-the-art and will save the city considerably in water costs compared to the old system." Do you by chance know on a, like, an annual basis how much we're talking?
I, I don't. It just, a lot of it's going to depend on rainfall. It'll have a rain sensor, so it will hopefully not be running in the middle of a thunderstorm, or, you know, we get one of those pop-up thunderstorms where we get an inch of rain in 15 minutes, the system should know that it's not supposed to run. It's that.
Oh, so that's where the, okay, got it. All right, thanks.
I do, I do have one quick question, Mr. Moore. The south, I'm, I'm trying to, and I, I actually do my, know my coordinates in City Hall. The south lawn of the PD, will that be where the fence, the perimeter fence will be? And I assume we're going to be clear that wherever the new heads are going and control points will be worked out with the installation of the fence?
Yes, the system was replaced at the fire station last fall. We had DMB adjust the line so that the fence posts wouldn't be going through it. We will work with the fence contractor and this contractor to make sure that irrigation lines are properly placed.
Thank you, and I had every confidence that you did. I was really just trying to visualize if this would be encompassed in the perimeter, and it will be. Okay, number 18. You are on such a You are on such a roll. Public Service Division for aggregates, road gravel, slag, and stone. Now we're to the really good part.
Yeah, this is the good one.
For the city's 2020 calendar year requirements, again, our favorite thing, from budgeted funds.
This is our annual request for bulk materials that we use. It went out for bid on Mitten. We received bids back, and they're listed in the letter for the low bidder and the second low bidder in the event that the low bidder cannot get us the material on time. It's our yearly request for the service, and it's apparent, it's the same contractors that have been for years.
Any questions?
Approving.
Would you like that on the approving agenda?
On consent, yeah, on consent. That would be wonderful.
We will put that on consent.
Thank you.
And one final comment, Mr. Roroff has a real knack of knowing when to go on vacation, right? Tell him, tell him well done.
He's actually home not feeling well tonight.
He has a real knack of knowing when to fall ill. Anyway, we, we hope, in all seriousness, we hope Don feels better, and has always outstanding job, Mr. Moore.
He needs to, he's going to see his granddaughter this weekend.
Yeah, he needs to get better real quick.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Doug, great job.
Great job tonight.
All right, item number 19. This is a request for council to set a date for the purpose of adopting a resolution placing special assessments upon referenced properties whose owners have not paid charges connected with the 2018 sidewalk program, Contract 18-G delayed locations, and the 2019 sidewalk program, Contract 19-G single lot assessments. This comes to us from the Engineering Division. Mr. Zalinsik.
I'm sorry to see Doug Morris show leave, but I was hoping that he'd stick around since he was on such a good roll, but I will take night. This is a basically a request to obviously get our date set for, for purposes of the sidewalk program. Technically, we had approximately 83 invoices for 18G and 236 invoices for 19G, so we're just looking, again, as a housekeeping issue, to get the date set, and obviously our illustrious city treasurer, Lynn Schiele, will be here, you know, if there's any questions on that, to schedule that meeting, so she does a great job.
Madam President.
Counsel, yes, Councilmember Jolly.
Mr. Zalinsik, 18G is not to be confused with 5G. We haven't given any lease and bounds forward here.
Here we go. That's correct.
I will offer an approving for the consent agenda if there are no objections.
Thank you.
All right, and check to see if you're on this list. I did. All right, number 20, I checked to see if I was on the list. Number 20, request to accept stormwater facilities maintenance agreements. This too comes us from the Engineering Division from NYX Building Edition Number Two in conjunction with the construction of a storm drainage system that provides adequate drainage for property developed at 38900 Plymouth Road in the southwest quarter of Section 30. Mr. Zalinsik.
Again, this is formality, just asking for City Council's approval to accept the stormwater agreement, then we'll send it on to Wayne County for recording. Again, a housekeeping issue, thank you.
To the Chair.
Yes, Mr. Donavick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to offer an approving resolution on consent if there's no appro, if there's no objection.
Seeing none, that's on consent. Item number 21, request accept stormwater facilities maintenance agreement. This comes us from the Engineering Division from Woodhaven Retirement Community in conjunction with the construction of a storm drainage system that provides adequate drainage for property developed at 29667 Wentworth Avenue in the southeast quarter of Section 14, and I believe this is tied to the easement that we accepted in the last meeting. Is that correct? Mr. Burnier.
The, the development has been completed, now we're just, the easement is won, you'll have a vacation here coming up, but this is a stormwater agreement, there's three components to this new development.
But I think in the last meeting, we accepted the easement for this.
Madam President.
Yes, Vice President Barr.
Offer approving for consent if there's no objection.
No objection, that'll be placed on consent.
What about the audience? No.
Just for the record, I know Randy Gasser very well, I told him he didn't have to come tonight, and I vouch for him, so there's nobody from the audience on this.
All right, and I should have been asking the audience at every one of these if they had any questions. Mr. Tissio, Mr. Gustello, Mr. Varga.
Mr. Gustello has a question.
Item number 22, this is a vacating request. This comes us from the Engineering Division to vacate the water main easement within Woodhaven Retirement Community located at 29667 Wentworth Avenue. Parcel ID is 46-056-99-0002-003. Mr. Zalinsik.
Madam President, I'll save Mr. Zalinsik if you want.
Thank you, thank you.
Excellent.
I'll offer this for approving, for consent if there's no objection. Again, this is with the other two that we've dealt with tonight, it's housekeeping.
And that'll be a referral to the planning commission.
What's that?
That'll, that will be a referral to the planning commission.
Oh, yeah.
We, we approved the water main easement for the entire property, there's just a little section of the easement that needs to be vacated for the hydrant, and it's just a formality, you'll have to go through the process.
Okay, but that can still go on consent, correct?
Uh, just, yep.
Yeah, okay.
It's just not approving.
Right, right. Item number 23, request to release sidewalk bond, the entrance and landscape marker bond, and the monuments and marker bonds. This comes to us from the Engineering Division for the Washington Park Site condominiums located the southwest corner of Hicks and Ann Arbor Roads, the former Washington Elementary School Site in the southwest quarter of Section 31. These were Council Resolutions 436-16 and Council Resolution 424-18. Mr. Zalinsik.
As you know, we accepted the park land and some other things, so we're getting close to the finish line on this recent development at Washington Park, so the only thing left would be the as-built drawings, but looking for your approval for $19,500 for return back to the, Mr. Leo Solve, or sorry, excuse me, $19,000 to Leo Solve for the development that occurred at this location. Thank you.
Would you like that?
Which means an approving.
Approving on consent agenda?
Yes, please.
All right, any objections? Seeing none, we'll move on. Mr. Zalinsik, as you know, you do have to come back. The item number 24.
Bring the Red Bull.
Yes, a request for a one-year extension of waiver approval. This comes us from the Planning Commission, Position 2017-09-02-12, submitted by Tissio Architects Incorporated, previously approved by City Council on December 18th, 2017, in connection with a proposal to develop and operate an outdoor storage yard for recreational equipment on property located the east side of Merriman Road between Plymouth Road and the CSX, CSX Railroad right of way, 12350 Merriman Road in the southwest quarter of Section 26, Council Resolution 413-17 and Council Resolution 414-17. Good evening, Mr. Tissio, thank you for your patience.
Ben Tissio, Tissio Architects, 19815 Farmington Road, and a proud member of the Italian party.
Oh, he's American club.
Mark, and I think Laura and I are all members of the same party, so, so be it. Thank you. We're here again to ask for another extension. I spoke to my client today and the contractor the other day. He's finalizing the numbers, it looks like we're getting very close to, we can start as soon as the weather breaks. We do have drawings into the engineering department for their preliminary review, so I'm hoping in a week or so we'll get the comments back and we can make those revisions and get them in for a building permit.
To the Chair.
Thank you.
Could we clarify something on the address on this? Because the yellow sheet is different than the planning commission sheet with the address.
The property was just recent, I'm sorry, Madam President.
Split.
If I may, Madam President. There's, there was a recent change of address as a result of a parcel division.
Okay, so where-
We'll, we'll get that corrected. Not sure whether or not the-
Cat.
Yeah, it's 12330. That was a lock split that was just received.
So, what's the correct address?
12330 Merriman Road.
That's the correct address, correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
The front parcel is where the building is, and that still remains 12350.
Okay, all right.
Good catch.
That makes all the difference, Madam President. I, I don't know if I can approve this now. No, um, just a real quick question, what's, what's the reason for the delay on this?
Uh, it, the project was much over budget, and he's been arranging for financing, and he's been dealing with other contractors, so it's a financial issue, it isn't that he's not committed, he's very committed to the property.
We, I remember delving into this before, we approved it before, I don't see any reason not to approve it now. I'll offer for consent for, if there's no objection, although there may have been-
I was going to offer, I understand how difficult your position is, so I, I support it, Sergeant. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
On consent.
On consent. Next item, item number 25, is also a request for a one-year extension of waiver approval. This comes to us from the Planning Commission also, Petition 2017-09-02-13, submitted by Tissio Architects Incorporated, previously approved by the City Council on December 18th, 2017, in connection with a proposal to develop and operate an outdoor storage yard for special trade contractors on property located on the east side of Merriman Road between Plymouth Road and the CSX Railroad right of way, 12350 Merriman Road in the southwest quarter of Section 26. Those were Council Resolutions 415-17 and Council Resolutions, Council Resolution 416-17. Does that address also need to be corrected?
Yes, please, yes.
Okay, so that should also be 12330 Merriman Road.
Yes, thank you.
Counsel?
Madam Chair.
Approving.
I was going to say, approving on-
It's late, but we, we will still continue to have some sort of protocol.
Approving on consent if there's no objection, and I think we might want to note, for the benefit of Mr. Tissio, we really are not trying to punish you by putting you so on this agenda, such a long agenda, making you wait so long.
Thank, I was wondering if it was personal.
It was not personal. It was not personal.
Laura's jealous because I was born in Italy.
I was not born in Italy, no.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tissio, and on a very, on a very quick personal note, we were delighted, at least I was delighted to learn that you were, were you in Florida this weekend, so?
In Texas, celebrating my mother's 98th birthday.
Wonderful.
And while we were there, we were planning her 100th birthday.
Fantastic.
She's in Richardson, just outside of Dallas.
Fantastic.
She's in good health.
Sure, she's very proud of her son.
She's having lots of fun.
Great. Thanks so much, Ben, appreciate it, and again, thanks for your patience. And now for the man who really gets the award for patience. Item number 26, this is a waiver petition, comes to us from the Planning Commission for Petition 2019-12-02-16, submitted by Center Management Services to operate a full-service restaurant, Chipotle Mexican Grill, on property located on the northeast corner of Middlebelt and Schoolcraft Roads, 13900 Middlebelt Road in the southwest quarter of Section 2. Good evening, Mr. Gustello.
Good evening. We'd like to have this approval. I would like to commend the council and staff on their dedication and diligence in going through all the items here. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, or I can give you a thrilling rendition about how when I first came here and bought this, and it was a farm and the different transitions, it's only 28 minutes.
28?
He's got a video.
Madam President. Mr. Donavick, Mr. Toy, and Mr. Barr.
Uh, sir, I've been driving by this corner for a long time, and I'm so excited that you are bringing a Chipotle there as an avid Chipotle user, fan. I'm excited for it, and-
It's, it's kind of an homage to the Chi-Chis that was there. We want to keep the same crowd coming in.
But I think it's a great idea, it's a great place.
But it is, it is a real leading part of that.
I want to offer an approving, but I'm, I think there's some more conversation here, so.
Madam President.
Well, I'd like to offer an approving.
Thank you.
Councilmember Toy.
Senator, I wondered, no, he was a state senator, he was. Yep, and I wanted Senator to ask you why you didn't bring an Italian restaurant there.
They, they kept fighting with each other.
What's that?
They kept fighting with each other, you know how the Italians are.
And they were always right, right?
Exactly.
Yes, sir, go right ahead, I'm going to let Mr. Barr make the approving then.
Well, Mr. Donavick.
Oh, maybe Mr. Donavick then.
We can share.
There's always a consent calendar if you're feeling extremely generous.
We won't get to see you.
As far as the Italian restaurant goes, it's next door.
That's Cardboard Italian.
Move on before we, oh, so this is, this is only, this is only half the remaining lot, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay.
For, I highly doubt anybody's watching at this point, in case anybody is. I just think, I, I actually, this area down here, I lived down there for 11 years, just less than a half mile from here, and I think it gets undersold as the most convenient place in all of Livonia to live, and this just adds to that. You live down there, and you've got your choice of, I mean, I don't even know what the number, but it's in the teens at least, of restaurants, of shopping locations. You just, I could go on and on and on, but you don't have to go more than two miles from your house if you live down near that intersection. So, this is just for anybody that might be really, really bored and trying to sleep at 10:28 at night, and trying to think about where they're going to buy their next house in Livonia, it's a great place to live.
To the Chair.
And it's convenient, too, if you want to drive downtown, go to Ann Arbor, go east, west, north, south, it's, it had been the Ira Wilson farm when we bought the property, and it's treated us well.
It's great.
Councilmember Donavick, can't remember to clarify, is there going to be an entrance off of Schoolcraft and Middlebelt, or just one entrance, or that hasn't been decided yet?
We, there's an entrance off Schoolcraft, it shares an entrance with the Aldi's, and then off of Middlebelt, it's the same entrance that we've used, and they share that entrance with IHOP, and further on down, actually, there's the other entrance with Olive Garden as well.
You could just make sure that Chipotle stays open for late council meetings in the future, so.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, I, I think we can do better than that.
Yes, Councilmember Toy.
If I may, Mr. Gustello, and this is a little off, but I want to give him a second, if I may. He's very active with the DIA, and since I didn't get to come to your festivities, your beautiful festivities you have every year, you have a very important artist coming to the DIA, don't you?
We do, we have, we will, and if I may take advantage of that kind remark, we, we will have the very largest Van Gogh portrait works in, in, in the country ever. We'll have over 70 paintings of Mr. Van Gogh's. We were the first, and I wasn't around then, in case you're wondering, but we were the first museum that purchased a Van Gogh painting at a time when people didn't quite think he was a very good artist, and it has changed a lot. For example, the 70 Van Goh's that we have, that will be on display, and everyone will get an invitation to come see them. The 70 Van Goh's are worth over $4 billion, and these are wonderful in terms of image building for the DIA, but they build image for places like Livonia and for Detroit and all the way out, and Larry Alexander from the Convention Bureau brings a lot of people down to the DIA and some of the other businesses when they have the kind of couples tour and say, "Look, we have a really great museum here," and I've been very proud to work with them and been proud to be part of the grand bargain because the Van Gogh, you know, some of the Yoon-Yoons had a cute little chant saying, "Van Gogh must go." Well, Van Gogh is here, and we're darn glad to have him here.
Yep, and, and just on, on that, first of all, did we have this on consent?
Yes, Council President.
Okay, I want to make sure we're done with that. Just a reminder along those lines, that admission to the museum is free to every resident of the tri-county area. There are special opportunities for groups to receive buses, there are special opportunities for seniors, and encourage people to contact the museum directly to look into those, but it is free to every resident, and the two special exhibits that are there now, the, the history on the Wedding Dance, one of the most iconic paintings, and also on the Frida on the Wedding Dance, one of the most iconic paintings, and also on the Frida Kahlo, just phenomenal, so.
And one of the things with us is if you go by the museum and see school buses or other buses there, we pay for those buses to come down. It doesn't come out of the school district. We've been training teachers. We're doing murals and inside-out, so we really instill the culture that we want to be part of the community, and if you talk to Salvador, our director, you realize it's very sincere, and I hope you'd agree that we've done some very good things for the entire community.
Well, thank you for being here with two hats on tonight, Mr. Gustello. I understand you came back on a red eye this morning, so thank you so much for your patience. Sorry you ended up as item number 26 of 26. It would have been 27, but we pulled an item off, and very good of you to be so patient, and thank you, and we're excited about the Chipotle.
Well, thank the council, and you folks do a great job for the city, and I think that's one of the things that we've seen in the time I've spent here from the McNamara years, is it's a real good concerned government with people who are very capable, and that means a lot to communities, and it means a lot when people come out to purchase property, or when we bring people out, they'll say, "Well, gee, what is it like to get entitlements?" And we say, you know, "Give them a good building, give them good plans, and we'll get a project done for you," and time and time again, that's happened, so it's been a great community to work with.
Well, thank you. Be careful driving home, and hope you get a good rest tonight. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. And again, an invitation, come down to the DIA.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do not have item number 20, pardon me?
No, thank you.
I was just going to say, item number 27 is no longer on the agenda. I pulled it. This time, we go back to audience communication. Anyone in the audience like to communicate with us? Going, going, gone. And with that, we are adjourned. Good night, Livonia. Thank you, everyone. Thank you to the tech department, head and staff for a great preparation.